Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, Lori.
Amanda Allen.
Here.
Julia Ah.
Here.
Linda Baker.
Here.
Ross Daniels.
Here.
Karen Noack.
Here.
Elizabeth O'Green.
Here.
Melissa Pat.
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments or questions on the agenda for tonight? There being none, I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Support.
Roll call.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Elizabeth O'Green.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Erin Miller.
Yes, agenda is approved. First call for public comment. Public comment tonight. Okay, good. Moving right on to our presentations and discussions. Superintendent Nash will do the new hire welcome first.
But I'm going to go ahead and announce them, so I would like to say a friendly welcome. We did recognize them at the Welcome Back for 2025-26 school year, but I do definitely want to recognize them. So Nicole Wood is at Andrews, and I don't see her. At Park Elementary, we have a slew of new staff members. Hannah Arnold, Natasha Burns, Emily Daniels, Violet Elkins, Anaya Hawkins, Micah Piazza, Sophia Siney. I don't know if I'm sure if I say her name right. Did I say it right? Woo-hoo! Morgan Schur, Jessie Stewart, Brittany Swartz, Vivian... Thibodeau.
Thibodeau.
Thibodeau. See, for you that were at Welcome, you remember that when I said, "I'm not even going to try." If any other thing is, is I had it right, but... And Sarah Wilson. At the middle school, we have Brendan Brown and Alan Meyer. At the high school, we have Charlie Shing. Transportation, we have Kimberly Keckler, Brandy Zent, and Desiree Bennett. Food service, we have Pamela Baumann, Melissa Peters, Nikki Ralston, and Susan Smith. And at partnership, we have Tricia Tennant and Rebecca Rains. So those are all of our new hires for this year. And actually, we're actually still hiring some more. So maybe in the middle of the year, we'll bring our next set of new hires in. So I just want to say welcome to Three Rivers. Keep on going.
Keep on going.
All right. So next is tenure. So this is the fun stuff, right? Every year that we get to recognize. I mean, we've added something new this year, so I'm kind of excited about that. So we do have staff members that have received their tenure with us. They'll get a certificate of appreciation and achievement from the Three Rivers Community Schools and Board of Education presenting Ashley Brandi's, and Ashley's not here, for the completion of tenure for Three Rivers Community Schools and providing exemplary service to the students, staff, and community of Three Rivers. We look forward to your continued commitment and service for many years to come. We have Dorothy Bruich. She's not here. Alexis Carr, not here. Michelle Chittister. Marissa Cioto, she's not here. Alex Edlin. Chris Gilliam. Melinda Gilliam. Joel Graber. Nicole Graham. Dwayne Harley. Haley McBride. And I know we have one here.
Janet Waller.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. Congratulations. Congratulations and thank you.
And you get to take a picture.
Oh.
Lori, will you come take one too, so we have further news later?
One, two, three.
Thank you. All right, so I will make sure we get those to them. And then new this year, adding to recognizing our staff, is years of service. So I just thought that would be kind of an exciting thing to add for all the service that is given, because if I calculated these, I don't even know what the number, but it would be a lot of years. So we have several, and so I know we have a few with us, and I'm going to go ahead and read them all, and then we'll recognize those who are with us. So five years, we have Carrie Bass. She's here. Thank you for all you do. And you get to stay up there because we're going to hang out. Oh, one big picture, so. Deb Farson, she is not with us. I didn't see Deb. Joel Graber is not with us. Stephanie Gray. Kelly Geider. Susan Kleppert. Samantha Myers is with us. It's crazy how fast five years goes by. I mean, I think about, you guys just felt like you just joined us, and it's five years already.
I feel the same way.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Michaela Shelton. Cheryl Thomas. And JD Yoder at five years. At ten years. Wade Bliley. Carla Damat is here. We'll have to give her her years of service.
Well, she turns five.
I know. It'll be fast. Thank you for everything. Christine Hersher. Stacy Leroy. Deirdre Leach. Because you were just an intern at Andrews. And Nancy Mayard. All right, moving on to fifteen years. Lori organizes this so well, and she's got all the numbers to go in. Kelly Campbell. Stacy Carlson. Marcy Charvat. And Jason Muckle for fifteen years. Twenty years. We've got a nice little stack here. Teresa Hambright is here.
Congratulations and thanks for everything.
Scott Juske. Gretchen Nolton is here.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Nicole Larimer. Sarah Morrison. Tori Morland. Travis Rohr. Tricia Sellers. Rhonda Stoll.
Congratulations to you.
And Autumn Wenzel. Oops, I have one stuck. Stephanie Allen. See, Lori's got me organized to give you mine. Twenty-five years. Christine Fattinelli. Deb Glass. Chuck Geider. Stacy Hartman. Steve Karabastis. No, because guess what? I'm right up there with you. Bob Kicker. Lisa Laskaritas. Rhonda McKay. Kim Ru. Phil Webb. Greta Zeimert. And Mark Zeimert. Yeah, I didn't give myself one. And thirty years is Jeffa. Good grief. So congratulations, and if you all come up here.
Where's the best place, Lori and Robert? Where would you like them? So we can hide them.
Yes.
Thirty years, huh?
I keep going on five years. What's that factored into that?
I felt funny giving my... Yes, you're welcome. I felt funny giving myself. Good morning.
Yeah, I think it's...
Yes, we will get done. It always looks good.
I say it every time. Staff and student recognition is always the best part of a board meeting.
It is.
Right?
I would agree.
Everyone come in and...
Yes. If you want to.
Do they know they can leave?
Most of them do.
Okay.
Those are the five-year ones started when I was a sixth grader.
Hey, be quiet, that's me.
Yeah. How does that make you feel?
Remember I babysitting?
Yeah, I know.
Now you're my boss. Yes, it is. It is crazy how it comes around.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
It's an empty house.
Perfect.
All right, now that the fun stuff is over, let's move to our action items. Consent agenda, anyone want anything?
Do you want us to do the budget?
Oh, sorry. Jump right ahead, yeah. Let's just do the consent. Sorry, Mandy.
Yeah, you come up.
Yep.
She's still over.
It's tennis.
Yes. This actually might be a good spot to say anything. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's... It works.
Three Rivers, twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm going to go up a little bit further so you can see the bottom. Okay. So, second budget update for the new fiscal year. We are doing very good revenue and expense-wise. The only small glitch that we're having is we don't have a state budget currently. Superintendent Nash will discuss that in a little bit, I'm sure. I can answer questions if you have them, or if you'd prefer to wait, you can wait till she discusses it. So revenues, right now, we currently have $131,704 that has come into the new fiscal year, and our expenses for the new fiscal year are $3,182,287. Pretty typical for this type of, this time of year. How state aid works, for those of you that need a refresher or may not know, is your state aid runs from October through August of the following school year. And July and August state aid gets put back into the previous school year. So our first state aid payment for the school year that we're in right now will be August. It is typically, that way. It is typically scheduled for October 20th and the 20th of the month thereafter every month. Schools don't get state aid during the month of September. I'm not sure what the reasoning is for that, but they never have during the time that I work for them, so. That means that your expenses are much, much greater than your revenue coming in. So when the state doesn't pass a budget, that can be problematic for schools. So I strongly encourage you to encourage your legislators to pass a school budget. Any questions on our monthly update?
Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as Mandy talked about, despite the school year starting, the state budget has not been passed, even though the deadline for that was July 1st. This is a problem for districts, because state aid is essential for us to operate. Funding is used for things like paying staff, running buses, maintaining facilities, and providing extracurricular activities. It is our hope that the legislatures pass a budget by September 30th to ensure the school district will receive our necessary funding, so. Just well aware of the delay in that and how it's going to, could potentially affect us tremendously, so.
And I know a question has been, how long can we go if we don't get our state aid? We safely, about a month out, to be on the safe side. Then the question is, what are we going to do when we don't? I will say, I am unsure, because this is uncharted waters for all of us. So we are just going to hope that by September 30th, we have a budget, and we won't have to worry about what that looks like. So more to come, but this has not been a secret, but we're getting a little closer to that September 30th than we ever have been. So we just continue to advocate and hope for that that's passed as soon as possible.
Any other comments on budget? Moving on to strategic plan update. If you have that for us.
Yes, so we will start out with Justin. Justin, I'll hook this up so you guys can hear me. Then everybody, we can just scroll through it for a good second.
All right. Justin Holbrook, Director for Safety and Security for the District here, if you don't know me. This is in reference to safe and secure environments and ensuring them for all on the strategic plan. I do plan to come back and talk to you a little bit more about safety and security up and coming and the updates that we've done over the last, the last school year and leading into 25. So with that, we have line-wise, that's fully integrated into our daily practices now. We're getting alerts that are being responded to in a timely manner within the confines of each independent building. Those go directly to our building administrators. It's being monitored with IT as well. So that's a platform that's coming in for filtering and creating that safe and secure environment for kids within the digital realm. We're also being able to use this and integrate it into our Behavioral Threat Assessment Program, which is being mandated by 2026 for the school year with the State of Michigan. Okay-to-say, still up and running. I can thank Anthony, he does a lot with that as well, and the district tip line within our website. So it's accessed and used in communication by students and parents. There's going to be okay-to-say propaganda kind of everywhere. If you haven't seen people wearing the T-shirts, or you see the signage up in the schools, and they're in the front offices, and access for kids to be able to report things anonymously to the schools. They had almost 12,000 tips last year in 2024. If you want to review that annual report, it is in this document, and it's accessible with the michigan.gov. Within that, I want to say they had, I have a couple of different numbers I thought were really interesting that I wanted to share real quick. In 2024, they had 25 tips that involved the seizure of a weapon within schools, 228 tips that involved the seizure of drugs or alcohol, and 236 schools conducted a comprehensive behavioral threat assessment in relation to those threats. And I think what's important is that people don't realize that when they come in with these, law enforcement often does get involved. It's just vetted through that state website. Once that stuff is in there, they can also put an outcome report back to the state, so that way they're aware of how the outcome came, and if there was anything further that needed to be done. The MiFi surveys will be given in January and February for this up and coming 2026 year. During the summer of '25, Three Rivers High School shared the MiFi survey results from the previous year with the Paul's Clinic, and they're working closely with that clinic as well. And then CMH clinicians are pivotal staff, including Ben Carley from the ISD, Alex Edlin, Andrea Scott, and Lance Ross, that are providing support in small group sessions in '25, '26. We installed Stop the Bleed kits across the entire district, if you're not aware of that, and put in several of those units throughout the buildings. They're near our AEDs now. So we have trauma stop bleed gauze in there, as well as tourniquets, and our staff is receiving training on that as well. We're going to be pushing that information out for individual use in short videos as well, that the students can also know how to take advantage of those. But right now, we're focusing on our medical emergency response teams, and we actually provided two, four of the buildings today in that training. We updated and added additional AEDs at the recommendation of SEC or Secure Environment Consultants, and then placed them around the district. So adding additional to the larger-scale buildings, like the middle school and the high school, and then throughout Armstrong Field, at the fieldhouse, in the concession stands, and then concessions at the tennis court. And we also have a stop bleed kit at the concession stand as well. Those have been added to a Google map that's shared in-house, but is available to staff and students to be able to see them where they're at in the case they need them. And then all of the '25, '26 drills have been scheduled for, for the year. Per building, in coordination with what the state is required, and have been submitted to the emergency response, I'm sorry, with the emergency management for St. Joseph County for the state recommendation.
Thank you.
Questions on that one?
All right. Jen, Jen is next.
Thank you. If you'd scroll that down, that would be fantastic. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jen Graber, the Curriculum Director.
You've gone too far.
I see that.
Look where to go.
A little bit more, then you're good.
There we go.
Yep.
Our goal is to deliver appropriate curriculum and instruction and assessment. We reviewed, evaluated, and revised the current K-12 data analysis protocol, and we developed and implemented a process to ensure that the K-12 essential standards in all content areas are vertically and horizontally aligned, and worked on the CNA and comprehensive needs assessment in lieu of spring data review. So the schools looked over their data so that they could analyze it and make better decisions. Created a district-provided professional development plan based on that CNA, that data that they had looked at, and then planned to review data review template in the fall. And then for curriculum alignment, we began the process in elementary ELA, middle school computer science, and ELA approaching completion for the elementary, and then also elementary sciences complete. And the plan is to finish this process for secondary this year.
Questions? Any questions?
Thanks.
Catherine. We're not used to using our Chromebooks anymore.
I don't have a mouse either. Oh, there you go.
Can you get it?
Okay, yeah, I got it. Thanks, Jen.
Okay, so I'm Catherine Blakely, HR Coordinator for the District, part of the Recruitment and Retention Committee for the Strategic Plan. So last year, our goal was to review, evaluate, and update the district website to better promote the highlights of Three Rivers Community Schools with the purpose of influencing more families and potential employees to join our district. So as many of you know, we did launch our new district website officially at the start of this school year. It's a lot easier to use, it's more accessible, and it provides a stronger communication tools for our staff, students, and our families. Big thank you for Jen and his team, for they led the launch of both the website and the mobile app. It has been and continues to be a major project. It included staff training, there's backend work, creating FA job aids, and helping families connect on the app. It's a big job. We're still fine-tuning it and responding to feedback from staff and families, and we can already see it's making a difference. I also want to recognize Lori on this, for the time and energy she puts into dedicating herself to keeping our website updated and running smoothly, and also doing additional training for staff. So, thanks, Lori. The second part of that was we were able to launch a new hiring platform through Red Rover. The system has definitely made it easier to have our candidates apply for jobs, less frustrating, and got a lot of good feedback from candidates, and we have found it to be much more efficient than our past system. It's definitely smoother and faster, and it has supported our ability to connect and outreach to potential candidates for employment. So we're excited about the progress and all that, and the positive impact it's been making.
And I'm going to add to that, she is also added to, for our internal hiring, doing, using Red Rover too, so it's streamlining the whole process, which is really good. Mandy.
Our strategic goal is assuring long-term financial stability, investigating and implementing additional opportunities to generate more revenue, and develop and implement zero-based budgeting practices. Zero-based budgeting strategies are being implemented and will continue. As of right now, it's just part of our daily practice with budgeting for the district until it is determined by the board that a different strategy is to be used. Opportunities to generate revenue are based on student enrollment. The district is focused on maximizing grant and categorical dollars by implementing long-term planning regarding grant spending, including forecasting deferred and carryover revenue to ensure that the funds are not lost. So how grants work is, you can usually carry over or defer the funds for a certain amount of time, and then there's a cutoff date, and after that date, you have to either give them back or you lose them. So we're working hard to make sure that we're doing some long-term forecasting to make sure that that doesn't happen for our district. In addition, we'll continue to closely monitor the grant spending to ensure that all expenditures are allowable.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy. John, for technology?
All right, so for technology, we have developed and implemented a technology infrastructure and equipment replacement plan. A lot of these will look familiar to you, because I came up here to talk about them to get them approved. So right now, we are finalizing the Norton Park, Andrews, and Hoppin Elementary School infrastructure projects. As of today, we actually finished up Norton before this meeting, and we did Park earlier in the month. We have installed all the wireless equipment early in all four buildings so that the teachers and students could see the benefit before we could do the backend. And then we're finishing scheduling the backend for Hoppin and Andrews as of now. We were also able to add playground wireless into the spaces and to have reach into the spaces, which also ties into the safety and security aspect as well, and especially for our students that have any monitoring devices for their medical equipment. We've continued to use CAT 1 funds to be able to replace the backend infrastructure for central office and central storage. We had vendors out here actually late last week looking at those pathways. We have the PA systems to be scheduled across the buildings over the next few years, and we are actually starting Park at the end of the month. And we are actually starting Park at the end of the month using grant and title funds to be used as a replacement cycle for elementary Chromebooks. We went through that with the principals and Nikki not too long ago to make sure that was in for this year. And then being able to maintain a replacement cycle for Series 3 bond funds. So what we did this year is we did a little bit of a mix-up. And now freshmen get brand-new Chromebooks when they start, so they have to just maintain that into their senior year. And then we gave the seventh graders new Chromebooks to rotate back into sixth grade. And we're going to see how the replacement plan goes over the next three years.
Just continuing on along the same line, under that provide attractive and functional infrastructure and technology, the irony is that John, I, and Justin, man, we worked collaboratively on this across, because there's so much crossover with the things that we do. Directly related to the facilities and operations side, one of the things we talked about as far as working on replacement plans and things of that nature, part of that is collecting and gathering all the stuff that's been sitting there for five, six, seven, eight, 10 years, collecting dust in a back closet that is so obsolete you can't even buy parts for it, nor sell it as an antique piece of equipment. So we've been working diligently on that. We actually were able, was able to get rid of a good deal of items that were just no longer functional and that were just literally taking up space within the district. And we actually received a check back in the process of that, or selling that, those materials through an auction of $6,754.95 coming back to the district for things that otherwise would be thrown away. So that was a very positive. Collectively, over the last couple of years, just as this is kind of an ongoing goal for us, through our Bitter G auctions, we've received a cumulative total of $26,937.52 on getting rid of these items that have been able to reallocate back to the district for use in different ways. So we've been very excited about that. As we've tightened up our inventory management system, we know, you know, what we have, where it's at, what the lifespan expectancy is on it. Of course, a lot of the stuff on that list is well past its life expectancy, is being held together with bailing wire and duct tape. But we'll continue to do that until the opportunity presents for us to replace it. But when it gets to a point that we can no longer do anything with it, or when it is so outdated that it has actually no function left within a classroom or with one of our buildings, we've had avenues set up that's well-established and has been good practice thus far. And we'll continue down that pathway to relieve the district of that, of having to deal with that equipment on-site and actually try to bring back some funds to the district from, from the sale of those items. That kind of ties into the district inventory update we've gone through over the summer. We've, we've re-updated the list. Again, this is in preparation for crossing our fingers, but not holding our breath. Possible some capital expenditure funds that can be set aside for large equipment purchase replacement. We have a number of items that are well overdue that, again, we do our best to keep running to, to the best of our ability. Bond fund utilization update, these are just some real high-level things. I mean, as, as you've been, Nikki and the team have been updating everybody about the projects that are going on with the bond. Some of the pieces that are, kind of weren't on the initial plan, but then became part of the plan due to discovery, due to issues that transpired over the course of time as, as we've been moving forward with work and things of that nature, just to draw your attention to, that we've been working on through a lot of coordinated effort. The middle school fire system upgrade was something that, you know, we had hoped to avoid having to do that in its entirety when we initiated the work with the bond. Unfortunately, as the process went through, you know, there were mechanical failures that were beyond repair, and so we had to make adjustments, you know, through the course of those actions. It's kind of the nature of the beast when you're, when you're fixing something and replacing pieces and parts, you try to do your best to make it all work. And that's what the district did. We did a great job of trying to work with what we had and leverage it to our, our benefit to maximize the utilization of those bond dollars. But some of those hard decisions had to be made. And, you know, I know Nikki sweated over it quite a bit. I know I did a lot of discussions about it to find the most effective way to, to move forward. But the outcome of that is the fire, fire safety system at the school will be completely updated in its entirety, brought up to current code, so. Another thing we did is we added a water softener at the middle school in addition to some of the original plans. And this is to help temper the water that actually services our heating loops and our piping. We have aged infrastructure within that building during the bond work. We didn't redo everything, so we're dealing with a lot of older, you know, aging infrastructure equipment. And one of the things that's made that very, it's been difficult on that is, is our water quality that we've been putting through the building that we use. It's, you know, gives us a higher level of chemical treatment that we have to utilize to maintain effective water in our heating loops. We get a lot of deterioration through the piping. It affects our supply and drainage sites and things of that nature. And this has just been since the building was built. It's just the way it was built, it's the way it worked. We took the opportunity with some of the new piping to actually tap in a water softener system for the entire school. So that is a complete new app that we were able to get built in, which is a great thing. And that should definitely help us with long-term maintenance costs as well as just increase the overall water quality in the building. Roofing replacement project is, is ongoing as part of the bond and is continuing to on-go. As we are doing that, we discover things, unfortunately, roofings, things like that, that a while fell out of the entire ceiling once we opened it up. But we're taking care of those things as we go, which is the way to do it. We did our best to, without having x-ray vision, to identify and all the bond engineers and roofing contractors and everybody we had working on this, to come up with a, with a boxed plan. And of course, as you do that work, you find things as you go along, under the layers. And we're, we're taking care of them one at a time. And then not just Band-Aid fixes, but taking care of them the proper way so they're not going to be an issue moving forward. Middle school with all the wonderful leakage, this is, this was an important thing. Plumbing fixture modernization, I was really excited about this. My guys actually did this, so credit is to them. In the process of the last series of bond work, we had purchases. A lot of times when we buy materials for a particular project, we always try to buy what we call overage. So a little bit of over, that way we have stock. So if there's an equipment failure or something like that. Well, collectively, through all the different work, we were able to come up with some extra valve faucets and operational heads for restroom applications. So instead of just letting those sit in a box and collect, like has been done in the past, where they sit there for 20 years and then you look at them and you go, what am I going to do with this? We actually took them and we had them reinstalled into one of the other bathrooms, which allowed us to expand, literally at a no cost to us at least, or no cost increase, some of the bathroom renovation work at the middle school. So we were excited about that. While the contractors were putting in the, the supply side, we also went back through and took care of the discharge side so that that way it was a collective upgrade. So that was a very exciting thing, at least I think it was very exciting. I was real proud of the guys for that. Middle school water system upgrade, this is another one. This one actually the board reviewed a number of years ago. It was proposed as an option to deal with a heating issue in the water supply side over at the middle school. Those plans had been tucked away and for various reasons that that opportunity wasn't available to be taken advantage of at that time. So when the opportunity re-presented with the work that was being done, we actually were able to revitalize that plan, bring it back to life, make a few tweaks to it to update it and leverage the work that was already being done to tie in the heating system so that our brand-new heating system now supplies the entire middle school versus our brand-new heating system only supplying part of the middle school and the other part being supplied by a 50-gallon, 15-year-old water heater. So that was a big, that was a big win. So I'm very happy about that. It'll, it'll help, it'll help that building out in a lot of ways. District energy planning initiative, you guys have heard me talk about this before. It's still, it's still on my mind, it's still on my desk, and it's still on my wall. So I'll continue to talk about it. But we actually did have an opportunity with some of the forward-thinking work we've been doing with GMB and Nikki and the bond planning team with this whole interma, energy management concept and how we could leverage that to our advantage. We actually met for some preliminary meetings with GMB, Verge, Verge and Voss, who was a lighting supply company that we've worked with for years. They've saved us tens of thousands of dollars. And I kid not when I say that on being able to leverage rebate opportunities for a lot of our lighting initiatives and low-voltage electrical initiatives and things of that nature. But we started some conversations to look at how we could possibly leverage this as a means to advance some projects that unfortunately didn't make it into the, the final bond work that will have major impact on instructional areas and our classroom areas. So hopefully, we'll continue down that path. We are at the point where I'll be bringing some information to you in the not-too-distant future about a no-cost district-wide energy audit that they're willing to perform. And on that behalf, then we would tie that information in with GMB and work collaboratively on some designs of ideas and plans just to consider that might be a way for us to save some money, money, long-term in our energy, energy spend. Again, this is at the very preliminary stage, so just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of it. But on the backend, some of the things that we're doing related to our strategic plan. We also secured a $317,948 filter first grant for the healthy hydration program. I've reported out on that before. That's moving forward. We did complete some work on that this summer at no cost, which was actually removing the requisite plumbing that was identified as necessary to be removed based on the requirements out of all the grade school classrooms, capping those, sealing them up properly, and making sure they met the requirements and criteria. Our next phase now is to move forward with the purchasing of the actual units that we'll be installing to replace all the other bottle, bottle units to bring everything up to a, a number that meets the requirement for us to have. So I'll have more on that as we move forward, but that's kind of where we're at at this point. And that's about it.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. I'm assuming no questions, he's very thorough.
Do you have a question?
She, we have one question, Linda has a question.
Not for Brian necessarily, for Jen.
Oh, for Jen.
It's about the PA system. Yes, since you snuck back to your seat over there. Yeah, so the PA systems are going to be upgraded, replaced, or?
Yes, yes, we, we got that approved earlier this year as well through Up Here. So it's the same exact system we were looking at. So we're going to put the first one in at Park, and then we'll do the high school afterwards. We want to get Park to at least 80%. And then I will work with Justin to set new protocols since we're going to adopt, adopt, I love you guys, into the initial feature set of the PA system.
So I, I guess my question really revolves around how those are heard throughout the building? And are they going to be in the same place as they were originally? And are those curable in every, each building?
The company, part of their contract will fully audit the system and wires. Any wires that need to be replaced as part of the contingency plan that we have in place, so they will replace that. They have zones set up, so it'll be different than your typical PA system that you're used to seeing with hard wires. It will also work over the network. So we'll be able to control volume levels at a different capacity than we've seen with other PA systems and be able to assess those tones. And I work with all the principals multiple times throughout the years to assess their PA systems. And we find that we have to turn them up multiple times a year just because it's just the nature of PA systems, unfortunately.
So there wouldn't be a, a portion of the building or a room or something that might be so closed off that the PA system?
No, they're, so initially, before we came into this project, I did an analysis with every single one of the principals in their buildings. And we went through and actually pre-added speakers to this project to make sure that there was coverage. Some areas we found in bathrooms where there was, weren't speakers in the past, and we were able to pre-gap that. But then we're also going to look at that again because there's a possibility we didn't do it perfect the first time.
Okay, that was my concern about, or my question about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last one is Melissa.
Hi, Melissa Frye, Director of Special Education here in Three Rivers. So our last group is nurture and engage in supportive community. So obviously, as everyone has said, our update, or our website is up and running. We have new signage at each of the buildings. It's very nice that you can change them from anywhere, which is super awesome. So if something comes up like a no-school day in a few months, principals can do that from home, which is nice. We also have the new app that's up and running. We do have a couple of buildings that are really digging in and piloting it this year to kind of work out the kinks with technology. And we also have the new building entry systems that we've already talked about at Park and the High School for community ease. So our goal is just to continue to get information out there through social media accounts, obviously through the app, working through those things, and then keep updating that community calendar that we have to just try to get any, and any and everything out that we can so people are informed. Questions? Thanks.
Which leads me into next year's focus. Next one or not? So these will be after talking with our team. Again, I'm going to say thank you to our team because our success would not be our success without this team back here that is tremendous in helping us meet our strategic plan. So with that, we all had conversations within our groups. And our focus this year, as we close out this last part of our strategic plan, obviously this stuff doesn't just checklist and goes away, it's continued work that we do. But as I mentioned to the last meeting, we will need to look at a new strategic plan going into '26, '27. So our focus areas for safe and secure environment, 1.05 are visitor procedures, looking at the new management system that we have for visitors, continuing to look at the couple of buildings that we have it and how we can implement it into the other buildings. 1.06, emergency response plan. You've heard a lot about, I love you guys, we're transitioning to that protocol. And then have our emergency operations plan transfer. Just like you all trying to navigate this. I'll keep it up here, so Robert, you have that. For curriculum, 2.06, vertical and horizontal alignment for K-12 standards. So we'll continue to look at that for curriculum mapping. For staffing, annual benefit survey is something that we need to look at, 3.06. So that is on the docket for this year. Long-term financial stability, continuing the zero-based, but looking at our preschool programming. Provide attractive and functional infrastructure and technology. For technology, looking at the continuation of infrastructure, what is the replacement plan that John has talked about with category one and two? And then a main replacement cycle, as he alluded to earlier. Also for facilities, same thing that Brian alluded to, our replacement plans. Hopefully, we can someday have a nice capital outlay project fund and be able to work towards those things that we're crutchling wrong with, I guess you'd say. And then, as Melissa just mess, mess, mentioned, for supportive community, continuing using our social media, our, our app, and then updating that community calendar. So our timeline, January, December, January, we look at it as a team check-in. We have continuous check-ins, we'll give a mid-year progress in April. And then August, September, depending on what's on the agenda, we will do a final update. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on to the consent agenda. Forty-one minutes later. No, very good information from everybody. We always appreciate the updates on the strategic plan. So much goes on into the development and the implementation of those things behind the scenes. It's really good to see that that plan is continuing to grow and change as it was designed to do. So, very cool. Does anyone pull out anything from the consent agenda? Motion to approve as a whole?
Support.
Roll call.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Elizabeth O'Green.
Yes.
Melissa Pack.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Yes, motion passed at 7-0. Board calendar for this month, September 19th is the Three Rivers High School Homecoming Parade and Game. Game starts at 7:00, parade is at 5:30.
Six.
Six.
Right, 5:30 is lineup, 6 o'clock, right?
No.
I've read both. Five, five is lineup, 5:30 is the parade. I've got too many things going on in this little room. Right, well, I've got it, yes, it's on my calendar. If it's not on my calendar, it doesn't happen.
I get it, yep. September 26th is the combined band night and pre-game show at 6:45 PM at Armstrong Field. October 6th will be our Board of Education work session. October 10th is grandparents' grandfriends' day. October 17th is senior night at the home football game. October 20th is staff PD day, no school for students. October 20th will be our Board of Education regular meeting. And then the 28th is the middle- And then the 28th is the middle school band concert for Halloween at 7 o'clock at the high school pack. Lots going on this month. Any board member comment? All right, motion to adjourn?
Support.
Roll call?
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Elizabeth O'Green.
Yes.
Melissa Pach.
Yes.